Mike, could you go down and make sure that the wizard is awake?
Wizard.
I'm gonna just take one and pass it.
One of the yard, correct?
That's the same one.
Yes.
No, I don't see a sign.
They're ugly because they're actually colored maps, but.
Color isn't black.
I got a Kirk Schelling.
They're supposed to be.
2004 signed baseball. I got a Ken Kruski signed football. Herbal signed football. And a Texel Lee Hall of Fame signed baseball. So my sons-in-law's are all set for Christmas, Father's Day, and birthdays for the next year.
More.
Because that's what they're getting.
You're trying to throw a party, don't you? I gotta try.
When we get started, we're a little late. First item on the agenda is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay, Janice isn't here tonight, and I can't remember who sat in, which alternate sat in the last time.
Well, I wasn't here last time, so it couldn't have been me.
And I didn't sit in, so.
Roseanne, can you sit in for Janice then, please?
Sure.
That makes the seven, right? Yes. Okay. Next item is, and Erica's not here tonight, so I ask everybody to talk into their mics because she will take the CD and do the meeting minutes from that, and we probably should take good notes to supplement that. The other thing is I'll open this up to public comments. If anybody in public wants to make comments or anything that's not on the agenda. And not seeing a rush to the podium, I will close. Anybody from the public? You're all on the agenda, so I'll close the public comment period. The first item on the agenda is Alon Chaffey update on the RFP for the downtown mills. Evening.
Good evening. I'm trying to remember the last time I was in front of you folks and where we're at, but I believe I was mentioning that we had a delay, slight delay, in the issuance of the RFP. Happy to report that that request for proposal process is underway, and we officially launched the RFP on January 19th, and I had informed Diane of that, and hopefully all you are aware of it as well. The RFP is publicly available on our website, which is ncdcnh.org. I would have printed copies out, but I think it runs some 60-plus pages, so I'll leave it to your expense side to take care of that if you want to see it, or you can scroll through it online, and the public is welcome to take a look at it as well. We kind of did a public acknowledgement of that as well through press releases to the area papers, and other things we've done are we've done a direct invitation to 75, more or less, targeted developers that we would like to see, you know, at least look the RFP over, and we had amassed that list over time. And then we have initiated an advertising campaign as well, some, you know, that'll be regional and possibly national exposure for that. We conducted our first developer tour on February 6th, and between the cold and the short amount of time between when we released the RFP and that date, which we had already set, we'd hoped to have the RFP out a few days earlier, but we had two developer groups show up for that. I am aware that our next developer tour, which is coming up on February 27th, will be a lot, should be a lot more well-attended, if you will. So, and those are both required by the developers. It was kind of an either-or, here's two choices, but the February 27th one is followed by a pre-bid conference for the developers, too, so developers are probably more interested in attending that one. And we have April, I believe it's the 16th, I have to go back and check, but it's April 16th is the response deadline, and that puts us right back on track. Other areas of concern that we had when we had delayed the RFP were market conditions, and I'm here to report that neither the NCDC nor the planning board can do anything about what's going on out there in the marketplace right now, but we're still looking for those developers that are forward-thinking and are looking at the next cycle, because realistically, that's when this project would be completed, is probably in the next real estate cycle. And we are working with the town on parking arrangements. As you know, the TIF Advisory Commission had recommended, and properties were acquired, the Elm Spring Lot a year or so ago, the former Ottoman Building, and that's been prepped for parking, and that was done in anticipation of the redevelopment of the mills. Now it's just a matter of getting an agreement with the town as to how that will be meted out. And of course, my open invitation for a site walk, and I fully understand that you may want to wait till it warms up a little bit, or if you want to go tomorrow, we can get you some snowshoes. So that's about it.
It's tied, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, but you gotta get there. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. You said you have a developer tour on the 27th?
Yes.
Is that open to anyone, or just?
Just to the qualified developers, and we prefer to keep it that way. I mean, any interested party who would like to take a peek, you know, we've taken other quasi-developers, and I can think of one group that was not directly involved with development, but we've taken them through there as well. But this is for in response to the RFP, and we prefer to keep it that way.
The reason I ask is on the 27th, I had a notation in here of a possible inspection for the planning board with you. That was one of the dates that was thrown out, I think.
Okay, well, I didn't set those dates.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah. So, no, I'd prefer not. I think it would be best to keep it, you know, kind of separate at this point. And from a public standpoint, I mean, we've been running, I understand why the planning board wants to go through on a site walk, and I will gladly entertain any day, any time. I'll make sure that we can walk you through there. From a public standpoint, we have, I believe, for the last three years, had through the Heritage Festival, walking tours through there, and we actually did one kind of off-cycle last summer, and very, very well-received, so there's plenty of opportunities, and as long as we own those buildings, we'll continue to offer those up.
We're not on the TV yet.
You said, Mike, you put her on? That's fine. Any other questions for Alon? There were dates thrown out.
We threw out some dates, and then because of my injury and leave, I wasn't able to follow up in a timely fashion, so.
Diane knows where to find me, and, you know, with relatively short notice, I can accommodate, and if we have to do it in two slugs, we can as well.
We had, you know, we polled the members to see what dates, and it seemed like a Saturday would work out best for everyone, and so Arlen and I suggested maybe we'll just throw it a couple of Saturdays and see if they would work.
Why don't we do that again and poll it, and see if we can get it maybe before the next?
Do we do it before the next meeting? I mean, this is 17th is coming Saturday, or the 24th, 10:00 in the morning seemed to be a good time for folks. Do those dates, either of those dates work for people?
17th works better for me, but if I can't make it.
This comes Saturday?
Yeah. We can always get somebody to, from the NCDC to walk through. The only issue might be the N and N1 buildings that are right along Main Street. Jerry Landry, the general manager, is there usually Monday through Friday, and he won't, he generally isn't around on the weekends, so, and I know for a fact that he's out until the 21st because I just called him today, so it may be difficult to get into the N building on a weekend.
Could we push it back to March?
Yeah, it's not a huge rush. I mean, we're not even expecting, you know, we're not.
Look at that storm coming in and so forth. It's gonna be a mess.
Yeah, yeah. I just mentioned, I didn't mean to throw it back, I'm just saying, whenever you're ready, I'm happy to get you through there, so let's plan on a Saturday.
Let's pick a couple of dates and do a poll.
March 3rd would put it before our next meeting.
Yeah, I won't be available on that weekend.
He's available on the 3rd. Let's try to get a.
On what 3rd?
The 3rd.
Yeah.
We got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. I'm not available on the 3rd, but I could possibly do it on the 10th or the 24th.
10th, I don't care, the 10th, too. Any sadie.
10th.
10th on 10th, unless I'm out of town, which might happen, but if that happens, I'll just catch Arlen on the side then.
Is that 3rd of March was you said?
Now we're doing the 10th. Now we're doing the 10th. The 10th now.
Oh, 10th, March 10th.
It sounds like that would be a good day.
Yeah, let's go.
Why don't we say March 10th and.
I will put it on the calendar for March 10th, and if something comes up.
Weather permitting.
Yeah.
What time?
10:00 in the morning, is that good for you?
Sure.
Okay.
Where do you want to meet?
I would suggest in front of the Eagles Building, right there on Main Street. There's plenty of parking across the street in the lot that we own and the lot that the town owns, easy to get to, and that gives me enough time to get in touch with Jerry to see if there's some way that we can get into N Building.
Sounds great.
Super.
If I can't make it that day, I'll just connect with you some other way.
Yep.
And we will notice the site walk, just for the public and for the press.
Great.
Very good.
25 grand, you can go with the developers. Just trying to help.
All set.
Any other questions for Alon? Appreciate it, Alon.
Thanks, and whenever you want me back, just let me know. I think there's gonna be more to report as we get into April, and we'll have that site walk. I can, you know, if there's anything huge that comes up between now and then.
The site walk you said is when, March?
March 10th.
And our next meeting in March is?
I think it's the 20th because we have a conflict with the school.
Why don't you just tentatively, you know, after that walkthrough of things.
Yeah, if there's something to report.
Asking questions or something that we're interested in, why don't you? That might be a good time to come back, have that.
So noted. Thanks.
I just wanted, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to applaud the New Market Community Development Corporation for doing an excellent job in putting the RFP together.
Thanks.
It's one of the best I've seen. It's very impressive.
Yeah.
There's a lot of really good information, and I thought it was, your webpage and the advertising was done very professionally.
So fingers crossed that'll get us.
I'm very encouraged by it all, and I hope you have a good response.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Alon. Next item on the agenda is Ellen Snyder, discussion of the open space. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the minutes. Sorry. I don't think I read the minutes. Hang on, Ellen, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. We have to approve the minutes from last meeting. Does anybody have comments on the minute? I'll have to admit, this is one time I forgot to read the minutes, so it's up to the rest of you.
I didn't have any comments.
No comments.
Anybody else have any comments, discussions?
Move to accept the minutes as drafted. Second.
Discussion? Roseanne, are you still?
I have to abstain because I wasn't at that. That's the January 9th meeting, so I abstained.
No, I thought you were looking for something, that's why, I thought you had. Okay. Seeing no discussion, I'll take a vote. All in favor? And there'll be all abstains since I haven't read them, so, but that passes it.
And I'll abstain because I wasn't at the meeting.
Five, and it's two abstaining. Okay, thank you, Mike, for reminding me. Are we ready now, Ellen?
I'm ready.
I was so anxious to get to it.
So, hi, this should be my, hopefully my last visit to talk about the open space plan. It's pretty near completion, there's a few more things to finish up, but I met with the Conservation Commission last week and the Open Space Commission last night, and you folks tonight. And you should have all received a copy, I hope, or had an opportunity to review the last draft. So I can either entertain some questions, or is it a couple of things I could go through as well, but if there's any initial questions that you might want me to address, I can do that as well.
Why don't you go through the things you want to go through, and I don't think we had the map, so I think there's two color maps, are these the same maps that are on the wall?
Yes, yeah, just their map color.
Okay, so everybody, okay, everybody has the maps as well, okay, great. Well, probably the two, the two main things I think to talk about are the priority areas that we've identified in the plan, the priority conservation areas in town, and we can go through those, and then the set of recommendations in Chapter 7, I think it is, or the last chapter. And again, remember, those are divided into education and stewardship, land conservation and land use planning, and obviously land use planning would be the most important ones for the planning board, but it doesn't mean you might not be involved in the other recommendations as well, and we can go through those individually. So, we can use the maps to look at the priority conservation areas, and we're still developing some of the maps, again, thanks to Rob for his great work on these, and we'll have these in good form when the plans finished, hopefully by the end of February, by the 1st of March is our target date. So let me just go through the maps so you get a sense of what these are trying to explain. The first map, which is this one here, is really just the base map to give everybody a sense of where we are in New Market, and it's got the, sort of the key areas labeled, the roads and some of the water courses. And then Map 2, which I don't think we have up here yet, but is the drinking water, that's gonna have the water resources and the drinking water resource, so it's gonna show the aquifer, the wellhead protection area, the wells, and if, depending on if there's not too much information, we hope to show the prime wetlands on that map and other water resources, and again, we're still working on the, all the layers. It takes a lot of time to get all the information pulled together if it's not digitized, and I do, just can't thank enough, Rob, for his willingness to do this. So, that'll be map number two. And again, if you have any questions or things that aren't clear, again, these are drafts, so there's, obviously there's gonna be some things missing, but if you see some things that you really think aren't making sense, feel free to speak up. Okay, map number three is probably the next most, I think, interesting map because it starts to show some new information that we haven't had before. I think I've mentioned, and you've read in the plan, that there's been two really important studies done recently. One is the coastal plan, which looked at the entire coastal watershed, and the other is the Wildlife Action Plan, that Fish and Game looked at the entire state. And the coastal plan identified the most important core areas of ecological significance. So this includes water resources, it includes forest ecosystems, it includes wildlife habitat, rare plants, working forests, farmland, so it's things both for, from an ecological perspective, but also things that are important for human quality of life and well-being. And then Fish and Game's Wildlife Action Plan, theirs was really focused on wildlife habitat, and they looked statewide at the most significant wildlife habitat. And one of the things that's pretty amazing, we don't have the full state map here, but we'll have that in the plan, if you look across the state, and I think they pulled out the 10% to 15% most important wildlife habitat, and that is in, on this map, it's in pink. And it's also underlying the orange color, which the orange color on this map are the core areas that the coastal plan identified, and the pink is the high-quality wildlife habitat that Fish and Game identified, and you can see that most of New Market is pink. So almost the entire town, except for the developed areas, is high-quality wildlife habitat, and I think, Rob, you calculated today that, what, there's 257 towns in New Hampshire, and New Market is third in terms of the amount of wildlife habitat as a percent of our town. So of all the towns in New Hampshire, we're third in terms of the most significant wildlife habitat, which is pretty impressive, and again, it points to our location on Great Bay and all the wetland systems we have, so I think that's really significant, and it's gonna show why there's so many still significant areas in New Market.
That ranking is in terms of the percentage of the towns?
Right, the percentage of the town, right, not terms area, we're obviously quite small compared to other towns, but the percentage. So, what we're going to do, so let's go through the maps, and then I'll come back to how we're using this information. Map number four, I think, is gonna be really useful for the planning board, and it's probably gonna be one of the hardest ones in some ways to pull together, because it's all the overlays that you have in the zoning ordinance.
We only have map 125.
Okay, okay, that's all right, that's all right. Don't worry, it's still in development anyway, so essentially what it's going to show is all the overlays, all the things in the zoning ordinance, someone's gonna want to know, where are these things? Where's the shoreline overlay? Where are the wetlands overlay? Where's the aquifer overlay, the wellhead protection area? So we're gonna put, try and put those all on one map, hopefully have the urban service boundary so we can see, so someone, you all and anybody coming in for permits and so forth can look at that and say, okay, at least we have a sense of where things are in town, and also, so hopefully, one of the things I think hopefully will come out of this plan is you can go back and look at your existing ordinances and subdivision regulations and see, is this, you know, as we talked about before, is this doing the job in terms of protection, and is it clear to people who might be coming in for permits where the significant areas are? Because we have a lot of significant areas, so I think it's pretty important to make sure that's all clear. Okay, so that's the overlays. Then the next map should be the conservation areas, which you've seen before, and that's the last map on the wall over there, and again, that shows all the different conservation areas, which are described in detail in Chapter 5, I believe, the natural resource, or the inventory of conservation lands. Okay, so, we're using all this information for a couple of things. One is to identify existing priority areas. And remember, in addition to all this new information, we're looking back to the SMART report that was done in 1991 and all the work that's happened since then, like the prime wetlands designation, to pull this all together. So we are gonna have a final map that's gonna show where these priority areas are, but I can walk you through them using the maps on the wall.
So if we start over here in the western part of town, this is all Tuttle Swamp watershed. And if you look at the conservation lands, you know that a lot of that area's been protected because it has somewhat significance, not only for the town, but also the Great Bay Resource Protection Partnership. It still remains a really important area, and hopefully you saw in the priority areas in the document that there's a description of those areas plus a summary of the key features. And if you look at Tuttle Swamp, you'll see that the list is pretty long, it's really significant for all sorts of reasons. So that remains a high priority, and the whole watershed really comes down, extends into New Fields, and really incorporates this piece as well, even though this is a core area that, we'll talk about that, but this, I sort of put this all into one area called Tuttle Swamp watershed, because this water's draining into Tuttle Swamp. Feel free to ask questions, I'm gonna go along. Okay, then there's the Piscassic River, which flows in from New Fields and comes in here, and squiggles along here and down here and so forth. As you see, this orange again is from the coastal plan, so they've identified this whole area right here that they call a lower Piscassic core area, and the part that would be in New Market is right here. All of this has really extensive drainage off the Piscassic River and really important flood plain for flood storage, and obviously significant wildlife habitat. So I included all of this, this connector, and then this into another core, or another priority area for New Market, Piscassic River. Then we go over here to Great Bay, this is New Road, and essentially, again, called this Great Bay priority area, and this is, again, is a core area identified in the coastal plan. We go up here to Loverland Creek, and again, another still priority area, and again, a lot of conservation has occurred over in here, so again, the Great Bay Partnership has looked at that as a really important area. So those are the four priority areas that have a lot of ecological significance, as well as a lot of significance, I think, in terms of benefits to the community, that other conservation partners also see still as a really high priority. There's two more areas that are probably of more significance to New Market than perhaps to some partners, although one is still a pretty high priority. One is the New Market Plains Aquifer, which would be in this area, and we've talked about there's a new wellhead delineation, so we'll have that on the map. And so I essentially am saying that the aquifer really is the priority area, and the wellhead protection area, I think, is almost the entire aquifer, but they're pretty close. But essentially, that would be another priority area. And then Follet's Brook, still because, you know, historically it was a water source still being looked at, and we don't know in the future if it will be an important water source or not, and it's also got, as most of the town does, important wildlife habitat, and I have a note that that's actually, the label goes over there. So those are the priority areas, and you'll be able to see where those areas are on the map when we get that completed. Any questions about those?
How they separate Great Bay in terms of the communities?
Oh, we're right here, this is.
Yeah.
Oh, in this?
Yes.
I have no idea how that was done way back when.
I believe it's very close to a natural channel. When you look at a photo, you see it line through there, too.
Yeah, if you look, there's about, when, there's a couple of numbers that get tossed around, one is acreage, you know, about the acreage of New Market, and one is a little over 9,000 acres, which includes the Great Bay acres, and one's about 8,000 acres, okay, and that's the land area, although that also includes all the wetlands and so forth, but it doesn't include that over there.
Okay, so if we move on, that was Chapter 6, which describes all these areas. Chapter 7, again, are all the tools that you can use, whether it's for education, stewardship, land use planning, or land conservation, and then Chapter 8 are the recommendations, and in the very back, if you were able to get that bar, it's pretty long, there's a summary table of all the recommendations, and I thought we might just zip through the land use planning ones just to get any questions. And there might be a few added to this before we finalize the plan, but. So the first series, now what I did here is I, sorry, I put the, what I thought would be the lead board or the lead department in town, it doesn't mean that another board might not participate or collaborate, but I thought there'd be one that might take the lead, and that's what I've put in here. So don't feel left out if you don't see the planning board in some of these others. So really, it's the, I think it starts on the third page, the land use planning, or if you had any questions about other recommendations. The first one recommends that you adopt the open space plan as part of the master plan. The second one is, I think we've talked about, developing a record-keeping system for both conservation lands as well as open space subdivisions and tracking those open spaces. I think there's a little bit of housekeeping in the aquifer overlay district and the wellhead protection, since that's been newly delineated, that needs to be just updated in the ordinance. I think there's a whole, potentially a whole series of actions around the open space subdivision, that option in the zoning ordinance and in the subdivision regulations. Right now, it's an option and a special use permit, and a lot of communities are going toward requiring that, particularly in areas of high significance, so people know where, you know, you might want to do it, and so my recommendation's probably gonna be that you think, you might think about requiring it in these priority conservation areas, and whether you want to require it in other places in town, I guess that's an option, but particularly related to these open spaces of significance. And we can talk about some more details on that if you like, but I think there's some good ideas from other towns that could be brought in, but I think it's really a discussion that you'll take up perhaps after this. We can talk about some more tonight if you like. There was a wetland mitigation inventory that was done, and there's a publication and a summary of which potential wetlands in town could be used for mitigation, so if that ever comes up in your discussions with people who are doing developments that need mitigation, there's some important information in that document that could be used.
Is that the CEI study?
No, this was done by West Environmental.
Okay.
And Carrix Ecosystem, the two of them worked on it.
Are those wetlands that are in need of restoration?
Most of them, I think there's a list, oh, no, I don't think I do have a list in here, I think, most of them are land protection. There's a couple. There's a couple, usually the creations are really small. I know the one that's probably most significant in terms of, excuse me, restoration is Moonlight Brook. They have some recommendations about how to do some things there, which would, might not be a bad thing to look at. But that's the one, that's the one system or the one system in town that's been the most impacted, most severely impacted, I think. I think we mentioned before, the town has done a prime wetlands evaluation for freshwater wetlands. The same could be done for salt marsh wetlands. That's perhaps a Conservation Commission activity. Again, I don't know if this is related to planning board, but there is the Lamprey River Advisory Committee and there's also a Lamprey River Instream Flow Study Committee, the DES heads up, which is looking at water withdrawals from rivers and how much you can take out, particularly in drought conditions. And I don't think Newmarket is a member of the in-stream flow, but it's something probably the town should be paying attention to since we're at the mouth of the river and we're looking for water too and those sorts of things. So, there's a couple activities related to Lamprey River that you might just keep your eye on.
Ellen, do you have a contact person?
For the in-stream flow? I can get that to you, yeah, there's a person at DES who is heading that up. And I think we, Diane and I haven't had a chance to talk about stormwater management, but we're probably going to add at least one recommendation here about stormwater management. So, I think that in terms of land use planning, I'm thinking the biggest influence that the open space plan can have is around your open space subdivision provisions. So, that's sort of the summary I wanted to provide tonight. Be happy to entertain any questions.
I thought on this, what is now Map Five that you discussed with us the last time, there were several areas that you had question marks on and so forth. Have they been resolved or?
Not 100%. I don't, I think I'll have some notes in here about, you know, some things that maybe the planning department wants to still research. There's a couple of things I think we sorted out. There were some more open space subdivisions, I think we got those clarified and that was part of that record-keeping. It wasn't clear, you know, exactly where those areas are, what happened to them and so forth. And not that neighbors trying to hide them, it's just, you know, one of those things that records don't always get put in the same place. And then, there's a subdivision over here that was approved and a piece of open space provided as part of that subdivision, but it was never built, but it's on record and reported, so, you know, nobody asked any questions. I guess that's open space, but that might be something that comes up later. I think we resolved most of the other issues related to the...
Ellen, given that there's large expanses of areas in Newmarket that are considered prime wildlife habitat, can you recommend to us some land use controls that we can incorporate into our regulations that would preserve those values as part of our land use planning activities and the review of development plans and that kind of thing?
I think the main things would be to think about your open space subdivision ordinance and is, you know, maybe requiring that in those places. So, you're, I mean, most of the people, it seems like they're doing them now in Newmarket. I don't know if you've had too many conventional developments, but it seems like people are moving toward the open space design anyway. One suggestion, I think other towns are trying to move toward is, and I don't entirely know the process that happens here in Newmarket, but is to involve somebody from the town side, like a wildlife professional or a wetlands professional, to work, you know, right away so that they can be involved going out and looking at the site, so not too much effort is put in yet into the design so that, you know, all the people are looking at it up front and can really look at these resource areas. I think, you know, the Newmarket ordinance and subdivision regs have a lot of overlays. There's a lot of protections around some of these resources. I think it's actually probably pretty strong compared to some other towns. So, it's a matter of sort of, again, that's why we want to get all these overlays in place, to get a really good sense of what's the, I think the thing is to look at the big picture in town. So, if somebody comes in, not just to look at that one parcel, but look at the whole picture in town and see the connectivity, the riparian systems, the wetland systems to make sure that we're retaining some connectivity and not impacting the system as opposed to just an individual little wetland. Any other questions? Thoughts? If you have any additional comments, you can send them to me or call me or give them to Diane. I'm going to, I need to, probably need to finish this up by the end of February, so maybe sometime next week if you have any additional comments, that would be great.
I haven't read it all, I glanced through it and I full read through it and tried to get your comments. I have some minor editorial comments and suggestions on the recommendations, but not of major. And I'd suggest everybody else read it, but I, you know, just looking through it's pretty impressive. Thank you.
Great, you're welcome.
Fair next job on it.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
No other questions?
Thank you, Ellen, appreciate it. Now, the next steps would be that, and you're going to submit this and this ends your portion of it.
Right, I'm going to provide a hard copy to one to the planning department, one to the Conservation Commission and one, this was funded by the New Hampshire S2H Project, so they'll get a copy. And then I can also provide electronically on CD to each of those same groups. And one of the recommendations, I think I put it under the Conservation Commission, but it probably just as easily falls here, is to get it on the town website. And my recommendation would be to put the whole thing up there, but then also put it up by chapter so people can download it and look at it. It'd be nice to have the maps up there as well.
Do you think a copy could be sent to the library?
If we can find some funds to make a copy, certainly.
Yeah, certainly.
Absolutely.
I think we might want to make some additional copies of the report and have them available and take a look at the budget if not this year, next year's budget to include some of those.
Yeah, it's not, it's not too costly to copy. There are, you're going to probably want, the color maps are, I think, really helpful. And then there's a chunk of appendices, it's as thick as the rest of the document that I think are pretty useful. So, those would go with it as well.
Yeah, well, in terms of next steps, I mean, we have a recommendation here to adopt it for the master plan. So, I mean, I encourage other members, if you haven't read it all the way through, to read it now and if you have comments, get them to Ellen, because I think then what we really need to do is notice that, correct?
We need to have a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Notice it and include it as part of the master plan.
But if we're at, you know, if we've done this effort already, we can do that in short order once it's published. We don't have to wait very long and I'd rather, I don't want to get to that point and then have, not that we can't have discussion then, but have, one would hope the substantive conversations happen now, not then. I think it is important and we should adopt it for the, we should move forward with adopting it.
And if you need me to come back at any time in a meeting, I'd be happy to come back and explain anything if you'd be.
I have one crazy question.
Sure.
When I read through this, I noticed you described some land in terms of Goodfield Whipplewells. When's the last time you heard of Whipplewell?
I've heard them in the last few years, but not right around here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think they might be back on Win Hilton's property in the Piscassic Greenway, they've heard them. Yeah, the gravel, they like gravel, they like gravel.
Thank you, Ellen, very good.
Thank you, Ellen.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is Chaney East Corporation, continuation of a public hearing for an application for subdivision at River Street Tax Map U2 Lot 134-1, R3 Zone. Proposal is to subdivide existing Lot 134-1 into two separate lots. Proposed Lot 134-1 will contain, excuse me, I guess it's at 6.7 plus minus acres while proposed Lot 134-2 will contain 1.4 plus minus acres.
Mr. Chairman, if you recall from that last meeting, this was tabled until such time as the applicant went to the zoning board of adjustment and secured necessary variances. It's my understanding that there's been two hearings before the zoning board, the second being last evening, and it has been tabled by the zoning board at this point. So, I would recommend continuation of the public hearing until the next meeting in March, which is going to be March 20th, and that if they're ready at that point, that we take the matter up at that time.
Okay, do we have a motion to continue this?
I can introduce.
I'll make a motion to continue Chaney East Corporation subdivision on River Street Tax Map U2 Lot 134-1, R3 Zone.
Two?
Two.
On March 20th?
March 20th.
Yes.
I have a second.
Second.
Is it Mike?
Yes.
Mike seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, the ZBA is, we're waiting for, we're going to have an attorney come to ZBA to go over some questions that this raised, so we're going to have a meeting on March 12th and hopefully, so, which is good because that'll be before our meeting. So, hopefully we'll have this rectified in time for them to present at the next meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of for the motion to continue this then March 20th meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Ananimos? Anybody object, I should ask?
All right, next item on the agenda, Real Estate Advisors Inc., public hearing for an application for site plan and special use permit at 13 Elm Drive Tax Map U2 Lot 248, B1 Zone. Proposal is to convert a two-car garage to an open space, Real Estate Advisors. We had a letter from the Chaney Corporations, Chaney Companies, excuse me, asking to continue this to March 20th, 2007, to go secure necessary variance with the zoning board adjustment. Couldn't remember which one letter I had read that time. So, this is another one that asked to be continued. Motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the Real Estate Advisors Incorporated Public Hearing for Application for Site Plan and Special Use Permit at 1,3 Elm Drive Tax Map U2 Lot 248, B1 Zone, to be convened till March 20th.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we're going for a record. Next on the agenda is Five Railroad Street LLC, public hearing for an application for minor site plan, Five Railroad Street Tax Map U4 Lot 16, R2 Zone. Proposal is remodel the existing first floor office space and convert a portion of the existing garage into office space.
Did I get one? I think so. Do you have two of them? Maybe you and I can share. Here's some follow-up memo and another revised plan.
Roger?
Good evening, planning board. I'm Roger Roy. We're in a unique situation tonight compared to what we usually are in. We're actually representing ourselves for a new office space for MJS Engineering. Mike Severt, the owner, bought this building, Five Railroad Street, and we're hoping to move in in the near future. So, anyway, we're basically facing the town hall. Everybody must know where that is. It's a white building now. It was owned and occupied by Skyler General Contractors up till, I think, December of '06. And what brings us here tonight is we sought a building permit for modifications to the office space, which included renovating what is three-quarters or about of existing office area. And then there was a garage-type storage area in this spot and we are also creating office space out of that. Our overall goal for the property is to enhance the parking configuration and to possibly work with our neighbor who is New England Barricade and see if there can be arrangement made for shared parking or access, turnaround, what have you, and maybe some easements to protect that type of use. But tonight, you may look at the plan and it looks pretty basic and it is basic, we acknowledge that. Really, we're, we see this as a stepped approach from our perspective where we'd like to be able to use the building. We're demonstrating how there's adequate parking, adequate access. We're providing ADA access for a portion of the building which meets the standards according to the town's review person from Concord. And we hope to get approval for the plan that's before you and also by saying we will be back when we're ready to improve the appearance of the front of the lot.
So, what are you asking us to do tonight? To give you approval of this and tell us you'll be back when you want to improve it? I don't get it. I mean, when, we want to see the full plan in front of us so we can approve that and not say it's going to come back.
Right, I can follow that and understand that view of the plan. As we look at the building, we're really not changing the use of the building and it's the office building, it's been approved as that. And when we, when we went for a building permit, we didn't even anticipate that we'd be before the board for site plan review. And, but we were asked to come before the board. That's the interpretation so far that we would need that. And so, this, we're providing what we can at this point to show how we comply with the town's site plan review rights.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify that when this came to the planning board back in 1989, it was for contractor's office and it did not include the conversion of the, oh, no, garage space which was used for storage. And at the time, the planning board was very clear that if there was going to be any further use of the property, increased density of the property, that it should come back to the planning board for, you know, another site plan review. So, even though the use and the footprint is grandfather per se, it is within the planning board's purview to review it under site plan regulations. Unfortunately, the regulations, or fortunately for the town, the regulations that were in effect in '89 were not as stringent as they are today. So, that's why there's a higher standard that's being applied to the site as we revisit it this evening.
Ms. Ann, did you have a comment?
Yeah, and reading it, and I had spoke to Dan too, and the R2 Zone office use is not a use by right, so the garage area was used for garage and storage, so it wasn't designated as office space. But, you know, that whole floor was used for office in one way or another, so you could actually even consider it an ancillary use, an accessory use to the existing business that's there. And they would just need the packing waiver?
Right, we have the parking.
Let's get ahead of ourselves for a second. Do you believe we have enough to accept this for at least review?
Well, I was disappointed when the plans came in this afternoon, and I might add that I didn't really have a chance to evaluate them because they came in at three o'clock this afternoon. I would like to see a properly laid-out parking plan that shows, you know, the driving aisle shows a properly designed access to and from the site. And what we have here really doesn't do that, it's just basically showing the existing conditions that are there. There has been some additional information added to the plan. I don't see any water and sewer connection data, and that's something that should be on the site plan. I had recommended that there be some landscaping provided as a buffer between the New England Barricade property and the proposed parking area, it's actually gravel area, and that wasn't included in the plan. I think it's, what they've come forward with is an improvement over the last plan that was submitted, but I don't quite think we're there yet. I would like to see some more landscape enhancements and improvements to the parking configuration. Before I could recommend that the board accept it for review.
I have to say, I'm disappointed too, because I, you know, you know what in the tenure that I've been on the board, you know, we try to be flexible in the sense of who's applying, I mean, the rules are the rules. But, you know, I'd expect a little bit better from people, from someone who knows what was the level of quality we're looking for here. And to get these, I mean, we just got these tonight, which is...
Well, you...
Planning board did.
You got the updated plan tonight, but the layout hasn't changed really from what was submitted in time to be on the meeting tonight, so. I do want to make sure that's clear, that you certainly have had a set of plans, and we gave an update tonight. I knew there wasn't gonna be time to review it, but at least it could be handed out as an update, I could go over the changes we made tonight. But we, you've, this plan essentially minus some notes and definition of some pavement areas that we'd be removing to improve the green space, and a couple other clarification notes. You know, the plan hasn't changed with the exception of a few improvements.
Well, you know, from my perspective, I'm a little disappointed on what's being submitted initially anyway. And I think we need, need to be firmer for all applicants, that there has to be better information in a more timely fashion, and you know, I think, you know, having come before us, you know what we sort of need out of this. It's up to the board for discussion whether we need, we need to, right now, our point is whether we accept this for review or we ask Mr. Roy to go back and fill and improve it and come back, continue this till next meeting. Or we can accept it for review and have a discussion, have him come back, or whatever, you know, there's three steps to this. We don't accept it, he has to go back and resubmit, refi, I don't, we can continue it.
We can continue it.
We could accept it for review, make comments on them, and then save approval till some future date, to the next meeting. Or depending on the board's, what the board would like to do, we could try to approve this tonight. I think the issue with the parking is something that should have been addressed. I mean, I took a quick ride out there, and I think with some, a little bit more planning, I mean, I can't even, until I went and looked, and I'm still not sure where the driveway is, how they all get in. This doesn't look like it's, it shows that we have, there's enough spaces, but I agree with Diane, it's not laid out well, and there should be more thought to it as presented to us. But that's my opinion. Any other, any board have this other, other members have discussion?
There's, there's some work going on, can you tell us what work is underway right now? You said in your application earlier later that there was a, a building permit that you had secured, so what work is already going on?
We're, we've begun the renovation work, and so, right now, we're at the level of walls are partitioned, and many, but not all of the utilities are run through the walls, so we're getting close to drywalling.
And the doors have been removed?
Yep, the garage doors have been removed and framed in, and a couple windows have been added. There's still an access door to the side here that needs to be added. So we're at the, rough framing's ninety-five percent done, and utilities are seventy-five percent done. So, we agree with the planning, with you, Mr. Chair. There is a better way to do the parking layout, and we're not gonna stand here and say there isn't. Our position right now is, we feel the better way is to involve two properties, ours and New England Barricade, because there's a history that they have some problems turning around in their own property, so. We need some time to be able to come up with a, with a, with an improved parking circulation and access plan. But in the meantime, we would, you know, we're, I don't know if we have a building permit or not, I won't stand here and say if we do. But in the meantime, we'd like to occupy the building and, and tell you that we're gonna come back with a full plan within the short term, you know, this year.
Roger, do you have any idea of how long it will take you to work out the details with New England Barricade?
No idea, we definitely want to talk to them, but we haven't, we haven't talked to them yet. But Mike is, has been acquainted with Sidmore. What is Sidmore? Sorry. That's Philip Sidmore, sorry.
And you say that there are concerns that they have about their own parking turnaround situation that you might be able to help them with? Is that the idea?
Yeah, that's the idea. Right now, I don't know exactly how they turn their trucks around, but I've heard that they, they use some of this space here.
So that you, you both have something to gain?
Right.
And the main thing would be to get together with them as soon as possible, right?
Right, that's correct.
See, before you could finalize your parking plan, you'd have to have that, those details worked out, right?
Right.
Mike?
Is there an option for that small municipal lot, just up from where they are, as far as parking concerns are? I mean, during the daytime, isn't that available for anyone?
It is, and I pointed that out in my memo. There is six or seven parking spaces that are open to the public in that parking lot.
Do we know if, for example, New England Barricade is utilizing that lot at this time, or is anyone...
I'm not aware of that, I, you know, I've been down there a few times, and, you know, I see maybe one or two cars parked in there. Regular basis, it's not a very well-used lot, and I think it's partly because of the remote location.
It is a little remote.
But there's also six parking spaces that are available on a lease basis from the town for employees or for the residents if they wanted to lease parking spaces from the town. So there are other options available for parking.
We foresee the parking, at least in the temporary situation is, there are two, you know, right now, this area works to be five parking spaces, and there isn't really, it is hard to see, where's the driveway? I know it's not defined, I'm not gonna say it is. But we see that these two spaces closest to the building could be the resident spaces, there's a apartment building up on the second, there's an apartment unit, sorry, on the second floor, a single apartment unit. And during the day, those spaces could act to be client spaces, because they're, you know, it's not difficult to understand where those spaces are. This could be striped with an arrow in either, you know, in either direction to show it's in and out, and that it wouldn't be no, it'd be no parking in this aisle area, which would give any of the employees ability to get in and park, and we go to work every day, we know how the property and the parking arrangement works. If clients can't really fit here, it's really, you can see right across this drive that there are, there is the municipal parking, and there are the six open spaces, and the other six, I believe, are leasable spaces, six or, or whatever the numbers are. We see a solution that works, it's not ideal, we know that. Guess we're asking maybe for some sort of temporary approval, if that, if there's such a thing.
I guess I'm just a little bit lost, so I don't know if some...
Yeah, you're not the only one.
I, it's an existing use that's being used for the same purpose now, and they're gonna continue that but expand it. We're having issues with the parking situation, which I agree, I have issues with it too. They went to pull a building permit, but they can't pull a building permit, but they did? Is that, I mean, what triggered this?
When they went, when they went to the building inspector, they were of the impression that all they had to do was get a building permit for the interior renovations, and when they came in and met with us to review the plans, we discovered that there was some storage and garage space that was being converted to office, and that wasn't part of the original plan, so that, that's increasing the intensity, if you will, of the use. I mean, it falls into the minor site plan review category. At that point, the building inspector and I discussed it, and it was determined that, yes, they would have to come back to the planning board. And then we did subsequent research where we found that when they originally went in there, they told the planning board they'd come back if there was additional use of the property for office.
The building permit was issued?
The building permit was issued for the...
And they've gone ahead and started work?
It was issued for the interior renovations, it's not for the new office space, from what I understand.
I'm not sure the building permit's been issued, I mean...
Well, you're working.
We are working on it.
Yeah.
We're working on it.
I guess my thought is...
Hopefully Dan's not listening.
If they hadn't come in to us, they would be continuing there anyways as, as is. So, why wouldn't we continue this, and they can continue as they are working, and when they get a, a good plan, we can then approve it, but I, I don't want to approve a half-done plan, or not complete plan, on a temporary basis.
I wouldn't recommend that.
So, I, it seems to me that we would just continue as is until the plan is complete, and then we can approve it.
With the understanding that they can't convert the three hundred and sixty square feet of garage space to the office until they come in with their, with, with a plan that's approvable.
Does, does that require, because they have a building permit and they're, they're doing renovations, does that require a certificate of occupancy?
They will have to get a certificate of occupancy at the end before they occupy the building, and that assures that all the building codes have been applied with, and, and life safety and fire requirements.
We ought to talk about this for another minute.
I'm sorry, Roseanne, thank you.
Do you still have planning on having tenants in the upstairs?
Yeah, we're not changing that.
Huh?
We are, we are, the tenants that were there are staying, you know, continue their contract, and we would keep that.
So Diane, if I read your, on page three of three, on your recommendations, that they, they have the required parking spaces?
They have the number of required parking spaces.
So they're all set?
But they don't have a parking plan that meets our regulations.
Okay.
Which basically, I mean, you, you have to have a paved parking area, you need to have twenty-four feet of distance between the parking aisles, you need to have a clearly defined entrance, and
So that's basically what's lacking?
The layout, the problem is with the layout and the design of the parking area, not so much with the number of spaces.
So that's what's, what you feel is lacking in the plan, that they haven't depicted that clearly enough for the board to...
To be able to approve it as a site plan.
Just the configuration, I mean, there's probably a better configuration so people don't have to back out on the street.
The site distance is limited there, as George points out.
I mean, that's the existing, maybe, is the existing condition, but that doesn't mean we have to continue an existing condition if there's a better improvement. I just don't, I'm just frustrated, because it's, on the face of it, this is, it seems, and I, not to preclude a decision here, but I don't think anybody would think that this is an inappropriate change. But as you can see by all our conversation here, we're a little bit confused about how we got to this point, how you got a permit before you got to us first, and then I can't, I agree with Rob, it's this, I don't think I could, and I don't know what the rest of the board could say, in good conscience, approve something we consider as half-done, and then say, okay, well, we'll wait for you to come back and finalize it. That's not what our role is here, ours is to get to a conclusion and approve that and move forward. So, my suggestion is that we continue this to the next meeting, but I answer.
Any other questions?
I just had a question, is the, is our approval, is the CO that is required now, I understand, is that dependent on our approval of the parking area?
Yes.
Okay.
How I would look at that is, I've heard of temporary CEOs, I mean, we, what, what it comes down to is we need some time. But we would like to occupy the space, and we're not gonna occupy the space and forget about the planning board and billing department for two or three years. We want to do a plan, we want to do it right, and it may be fall of oh seven. But we'd like to occupy the space at, by the end of March, oh seven, you know, so.
Why, why does this take so long to go to the fall of oh seven?
It's, it's probably more like along the lines of developing and raising the funds to do the work. That's the holdback. There's, there's already a lot of funds to buy the property and renovate the property that have been, you know, that are already assumed, so.
One option might be, if we have a plan that we could approve, we'd have an approved site plan, and there could be a temporary CVO issued if some kind of bond or surety was posted to assure the town that within a six-month period, all the site improvements would be completed. They would have to be site improvements that aren't life safety related, but there have been instances where, in other communities where it worked, where we've done that. So that...
I want to make sure I understand this before you go on, Roseanne, so.
But the, the key thing is that you have something on paper that makes sense, that meets the town's requirements, so you have an approved plan on the books.
So you have an approved plan on the books, whether they can actually implement that immediately, they could probably get a temporary CO until, with some surety?
With, with a surety, with, where they would, let's say, let's say they couldn't go forward with the parking area as we're envisioning. They could get a temporary CVO, post a bond for the cost of what it would cost to put the parking lot in, and, you know, there would be an expiration date of six months or a year out, whatever is negotiated with the planning board. And the town would hold that bond as, as, as insurance that that would in fact get, the parking lot would be completed according to the approved plan. That is an option.
Roseanne?
A question, if they, the parking that's depicted on the plan, is that how it is, is now, it's the existing parking? It, it has changed. If they were just buying...
I can't tell.
You can't tell because it's under snow.
Oh, okay.
Well, I can't tell, it's...
If you, if they were to move in there as is and didn't want to renovate the additional three hundred and sixty square feet, they wouldn't need anything, they could just move in with their computer and hang up a shingle and start working, right?
I, yes.
It's because of the expansion of the three hundred and sixty square feet that you've got to do minor site plan?
That's correct.
So, is there any way, until you can generate more funds, get a chance to talk to New England Barricade, that you could do without the additional three hundred and sixty square feet, get in there, get your business up and running again, get some funds, talk to them, and then come back to us? You wouldn't need any, any input from us at that point.
There's certainly a way, but...
So there's, and then I do have concerns about trying to alleviate the parking situation and turnarounds with another business, because if they end up selling their business...
It would be secured by deeds.
There'd be easement, cross-easement.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty standard, it's pretty standard.
Yeah. But, but that's-
I was careful to say anything because we haven't spoken with the neighbor yet, so, but, it would protect the neighbor's interests and our interests to have a, a written easement deed.
Right.
Or a written easement referencing the use, or the shared use.
If you can do without that extra 360 square feet right now, you know, you wouldn't even have to be here, we can just continue. It's until, you know, it's etched in stone that this is exactly what you have to do.
So that's an option you could take back to Mike and discuss.
Any other questions to discuss with the board? I have a question of order. Since we have an acceptance in this for discussion, can I accept public comment?
You can accept public comment on the acceptance of the plan, yes.
I'll open this to the public, the public comment, so you had a public comment. Please come to the podium and give your name and address. And this is on the acceptance of the plan, you know, obviously we haven't accepted it for this-
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Lynn Arquette, I'm the abutter at Seven and Nine Railroad Street.
Could you point to where that is, please, sir?
It's here.
Okay.
The, the house isn't delineated, but you're right next door. I had one concern, it doesn't involve the change of usage or what they intend to do with the building, as I see what here on this board. But, one thing that I do take exception to is that this indicates that there's a 15-foot setback on the south side of the building and that isn't correct. I suspect that this may have been carried over from a previous site plan when this addition was applied to the back of the building. I've since had my property and the, the neighbors on the other side, we had a joint survey done and that indicates that there's considerably less than 15 feet. I'd just like that, seeing as we're in the middle of changing plans here, that, that be corrected. And if they'd like to use my survey to, you know, establish reference points, that's fine with me.
Okay. That's it?
Good information.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else in the public? Yeah, I'll close the public comment period on this. Now the question comes, that we, there was a waiver for a site boundary plan?
Yes. And, and what I recommended is, I mean, they do have some survey data based on, I think the town's records, what the assessors' records show, and what I recommended is that they include the best available data.
I would suggest you-
And now that this gentleman has come forward saying that there's a survey available and he's willing to share it, then perhaps that information can be incorporated into the, into the plan.
Okay. Any other discussion by the board? Do I have a motion to continue the acceptance of this to the next meeting?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept, to continue the acceptance to the next meeting of March 20th.
20th.
For Five Railroad Street LLC. Tax map U4 lot 16 in the R2 zone.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Can I just ask for clarification, is that so that they can further refine their plan and address-
I was gonna ask the planner to specify exactly what the board would need in order to complete the application for the next meeting.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to review my memo. We'd like to see information put on the plan regarding sewer and water service connections. They have provided us with information on hours of operation and their employees. I'd like to see some information pertaining to the signage that they're proposing on the facade of the building. And we'd like them to address the parking lot design so that the entrances and exits to the parking area are further designed to channelize the traffic. The parking area and driveway could be defined through grading and possibly paving and providing some kind of demarcation of where the spaces are, if not through striping of a paved area, through perhaps railroad ties or some other marker. And that there be a landscaping plan provided that shows a buffer of trees adjacent to the northerly side of, the northeasterly side of the property between their property and New England Barricade.
Did you, did you wanna add something with regard to the-
And, and the boundary information that the gentleman offered to provide to the applicant.
Is all of that in tonight's memo that you gave us, February 6th? I have an extra copy, should I just give him that?
Yes.
Well, I have that.
Do you have that? Okay.
Any other discussion? Clarifications? Okay? Fall in favor? Any against, abstaining? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Next item on the agenda is 282 Middle Street LLC, public hearing for an application for design review of subdivision at Packer Falls Road, tax map U1 lot, lot 22, R1 zone. Applications for two different subdivision concepts for this lot. Concept one is for a minor subdivision with proposed cul-de-sac. Concept two is for an open space conservation subdivision with no proposed road.
Mr. Chair? And, and Mr. Doucette, Bill's still working on my project. So I don't know if the board could see that as a conflict of interest to sit on this. I mean, we've been approved-
Yeah, no worries about it.
Stuff like that, I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board. Okay. I'm not paying, that's right.
I don't, I don't think it's-
I just wanted to figure it out.
You didn't ask him that, did you? Good evening, Mr. Doucette.
Good evening. My name is Bill Doucette from Doucette Survey. I'm here this evening representing 282 Middle Street LLC for design review. What design review means is that abutters, neighbors have been noticed that the current landowner has an intention at developing this lane to some form. And there are two, there are two options before the, before the board. They, they adjust the volume on it.
It might be, it might be a hint.
Down, what that is?
Yeah, it'll still show up on DVD.
So there, there are two options before the board. There is an option that meets the town regulations, has a short little cul-de-sac. I think if you measure around the circle of the cul-de-sac, that road length is approximately 400 feet. Would create the required frontage so that the lots would conform to zoning. I have my opinion on that design, but I'd like to hear the, the board's opinion and public input as well. And then there's an alternative design, which is within, using the open space ordinance as a guideline, but it would, it would require relief from the ZBA, I believe. Specific to, there's a requirement in the open conservation ordinance that says there shall be no driveways longer than 500 feet. And then also, in order to apply the conservation ordinance, the parcel, I believe, has to be eight acres or greater. And both affect this parcel, this parcel is under eight acres. And you would have to have a driveway longer than 500 feet if, if you didn't build a road. And even if you do build this road, I think you're gonna end up with a driveway very close to 500 feet. Although I don't know that that driveway limitation extends to conventional lots, but. So those are the, those are the two ideas before the board. And again, the purpose for design review is to get some input back from the board members, back from the public, before we hardline all of this and, and make a formal application.
And I'll, I'll reiterate what Mr. Doucette said, this is for input suggestions. There's nothing binding on what we say tonight. They will have to formally come, if it goes forward, come, formally come forward with an application that has to be accepted. And at that point, we would get into more official discussion. So it is more of a free fall, a free-form discussion by us, and then we'll ask the public to comment as well. I'll open it to the board for discussion. While the people are thinking, I'm not, I'm not too sure I'm keen on either concept, Mr. Doucette.
I, I, I mean, I, I can add some, some thoughts if it helps get the, the wheels turning on input.
Well, I get, I, let me, and I, I, I don't mind, I, I'd ask you to do that. I guess one of the first things that comes to mind, either concept, there is a significant amount, if I, and I didn't outline the boundaries specifically, but there's, seems to be a significant amount of wetland impacts that, with either concept, to get to the, to the buildable portion of that lot. And how that would, you know, that would be addressed. And then, then we can go on from there and you can add what you were just about to add.
Certainly. There's a, there's a three, four acre upland in this parcel. The parcel has about 220 feet of frontage. It's just under eight acres in size and it's about 2,000 feet deep. A long, narrow, skinny lot. It actually goes all the way back in, it, there's a small triangle of it that's in the town of Durham. So it, it goes way back. It, it abuts land owned by New Market. Out near Follet's Brook and the New Wells. So, in the, under the open space concept, there may be some advantage that maybe there can at least be an easement acquired or conveyed to the town to go along with other conserved land in that area. The wetland, if there was a cul-de-sac, there would be, in my opinion, there would be a greater impact to the wetlands because the cul-de-sac itself would enter into a small section of wetland. The wetland crossing for, for the cul-de-sac, we've got about a 120 by about a 60-foot area. So, I'll do the math in my head in a second, but about 700 square feet of impact for the cul-de-sac itself. And then, to put a driveway and let's, let's say that that driveway is, easy number, say it's 30 feet wide, the impact, not that the driveway itself would be 30 feet wide, but when you start putting dress inside slopes and all that. And then the crossing there is probably about 40, 50 feet. So let's use 50 feet, so 50 times 30, we got 150 square feet of impact there. So certainly there is some wetland impact. That's directly to the wetland, there would also be impact within your buffer zone because your wetland overlay district has buffers and, and those are to also protect the wetlands.
Mr. Doucette, can I, you said 120 by 60 is not 720, it's 7200.
7200, thank you.
Okay. And the other was 50, 50 times 30, which is 1500, not 150. I have a calculator, so I was cheating.
And what's, first of all, I think the concept two of an open space subdivision is stretching the, well, stretching the, the limits of what we want out of an open space subdivision. I mean, this isn't really a subdivision, it's one lot. That was the intent of that subdivision. I'd have to think long and hard about whether that would get applied to this or not.
And that's why we're before you this evening.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that was the intent of that at all. I mean, if, you know, you, you could go with concept two as, as opposed to not an open space subdivision and, you know, put a conservation easement that goes to the town or whatever, if you wanted to do that. What's the, I mean, I understand the reason-
Seek, seek a variance for frontage.
Well, that's what, I guess, I guess, I guess what I'm thinking is what, you know, what, what are, what are the things that prevent this from, obviously, frontage is one thing, the length of the driveway is the other, for conventional, and how those could, what mitigation measures could be done to overcome those in some fashion?
Sure.
I mean, length is, you know, that's, that's a fire issue, and so if we went to-
I guess what I saw as a, as a positive on concept two was that there was a conservation component to it. If you go to the ZBA, seek a frontage variance, you've, you've split seven acres and a half, you get, and it's probably gonna be fairly vanilla. It's split down the middle, the three and a half acres either side, and they own fee all the way to the back. Concept one, I, my opinion is building a short little road like that that the town has to maintain is silly.
I mean, the cul-de-sac.
It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a town road, it could be a private road. It could be proposed as such.
I, I, yeah, I, I'd have to read your ordinance to see if a private road qualifies as frontage.
If it's built to town standards, it does. There's a third variance that would be necessary, I don't know if you picked up on it, Bill. In the open space provisions, there has to be 75 feet from any buildings to the exterior property lines of the parent lot. And the existing house that's on the lot wouldn't meet that requirement. And as you go back in the lot, as you know, it gets narrower and narrower, there's only a distance of 140 feet. So there's no way that you could situate a house on the back of the lot and meet that 75-foot buffer requirement.
What about conventional setback?
It would be the standard, whatever it is, I think, what?
Conventional there is 25. 25.
Yeah. So we could meet the 25 feet, but not necessarily the 75 feet.
Yeah, I guess from my point of view, from the open space subdivision, we're making, we're trying to make this something it isn't.
Yeah.
In that, in that respect.
Right. And as far as the conservation value, 3.6 acres, it's backland, it's wetlands, it's not gonna be developed anyhow under the, you know, wetlands laws. And I would, you know, I'd be interested to hear, hear from our Conservation Commission representative whether, you know, something like that would be well received by the Conservation Commission.
I mean, my opinion is, it's small, it's, like you said, it's wet, it's protected already. It adjoins town land, I believe, so-
That's right.
That would be a benefit, but that would probably be the, the one thing that would make it worth, worth the effort.
Can you speak up a little bit?
I was just saying that my opinion, and this doesn't reflect the Conservation Commission, but me as a member, is that it's rather small. It's rather small, but the fact that it abuts other conservation land would be a benefit, so. In that respect, it would be worth having, but to necessarily go out on a limb for it, I don't know that we would bother.
In terms of, in terms of the, a conventional subdivision, the two things that are major strikes against is the length of the driveway and the frontage, correct?
Yes. I, I don't know the length of driveway is, I, I think that restriction is within your conservation ordinance. I don't think it's within the overall ordinance, only 500 foot.
How about fire safety?
I know the fire department frowns upon long driveways, just in terms of getting emergency vehicles in.
I know there's a statement in your conservation ordinance that says, no driveway is greater than- Ordinance that says, uh, no driveway is greater than 500, but I don't know if that appears anywhere else in.
And I, I'd have to go back and look myself, but I mean, it's, it would be, it's just, it's what we're worried about is the safety issue.
Right. It's, I don't think it's a specific requirement, but it is a public safety concern that the fire department would, you know, comment on as part of its subdivision approval.
Do you know what the frontage is in that area? What, what would be the.
200 feet.
200 feet, alright.
And what, what would you think is, I mean, the intent of the, of the having that frontage is to, is for site distance and with the property adjacent to each other, but the house, this house would be further on back. I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, Bill. I don't know if that's a, an option to go before the zoning board and try to get a variance or not. Um, I don't know. I, I'm not, I agree with you, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of the cul-de-sac, but I'm also not a fan of the open space subdivision, again, so let's, I've said my piece.
They'd have to get a driveway permit from the town, really, not, because I, I don't believe that's a state road right in that area, is it?
It is, it's, they'd have to get a state driveway permit. We have a memo here from Rick Malosky.
Yeah.
Who says he doesn't have any concerns, but that they would have to get a state DOT driveway permit.
No concerns for the length?
He didn't mention anything. As a matter of fact, I did talk to him, um, about this after he wrote this letter and he was going to get something to us, but he wasn't able to, I guess, but.
I have a concern about the.
He had some concerns about the length of it.
About the length?
Yeah.
And the turnaround and the access and so on, but I guess I'm a little confused. Is that a town ordinance or is it a?
No. It's not a town, it's not a town ordinance. However, you know, in the purview of protecting public safety, the fire chief can have some input and provide that input to the planning board and you could consider that as part of a condition or your review of the application.
I have a problem with the length.
I do too.
I'm saying I don't, it's a consideration, but I'm just.
Yeah, considering basically whether this falls under an open space.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it does.
So either.
I mean, that's, that's, that's just stretching the elastic of that too far.
Um, I also wanted to point out that there's already, um, a house which is serviced by that driveway and that house lot is a landlocked piece of land to the extent that it doesn't have frontage on an approved road. There is a right-of-way across that property that they can access, you know, across that property to gain access to their house lot, but there is already a landlocked.
Does it show that on the plan?
It doesn't show that, but.
Sure it does.
Yeah, it's to the one to the north.
Well, it doesn't show that it's landlocked is what I'm.
Right.
It's, it's the property to the north, um, owned by.
The Hopies?
Aaron and Linda Hopie.
Lot 24.
Lot 24.
Lot 23. Lot 24 there is. Okay.
So, so it would be a sheer, a sheer driveway then?
It would be a sheer driveway.
That Hopie in for that new lot, 22 dash two.
They have a sheer driveway.
They have a sheer driveway.
Any other discussion?
Show him the open space.
Maybe while, while the rest of the board's thinking about this, I'll open it up to the public comment for public comment. Yes, sir.
I've got a number of questions.
Uh, you have to come to the podium, give your name and address, please, and then I'll take you ma'am when he's finished.
Aaron Hopie, I'm the person with the landlocked property. Uh, the concept without the cul-de-sac, am I correct in saying that it's taking one lot and turning it into four lots?
You have to address me, sir. It's taking one lot, as I understand it, and dividing into two.
Two.
Alright, then why is there four separate numbers on the plan? There's a, a dissection going lengthwise and then.
It's a match line.
That's a, yeah.
That's the continu-, you know, the, the lot goes back about 2,000 feet.
Right, but the numbers.
The top piece is.
Numbers and the squares are all different.
Oh, well, they're supposed to be the same.
Hang on for a minute.
So that would indicate four separate lots?
No, no, they're not different, sir.
It's intended to be two.
It's two lots and it's a match line.
It's a match line.
Not redundant information.
Huh?
It's redundant.
Oh, okay. It's just for clarification of what lot that is.
Alright, if you, if you take the two halves of the map and you put them together.
Right.
It shows four separate lots. One on both sides of the match line and then one.
No, sir. It, the intent is that there's two lots and it's just a continuation of the lot.
Hold it.
Two long skinny lots.
There's two long skinny lots.
Alright, so there were.
You want, Bill, why don't you get up and show them?
Sure.
I'm confused now myself. Oh, he's, oh, because they're putting this in conservation.
This piece, you, it's, it's so long to get it out of. So you'd have a long lot that comes way out here.
Okay, so this.
And then you have a long lot that comes way out here.
So this is insignificant, uh.
That, that line is just to say that's where that mass is.
Okay, on the two.
Yep.
Match line.
It's okay.
Um, my second question is, um, if they were to build out there on that, on that concept.
Address the comment to us, sir.
Would there be anything to do about the, the drainage problems that already exist on that lot? Like the, like, my driveway seems to be, because there's an opening in the stone wall, seems to be the area that every spring there's a runoff coming out of my driveway going on both sides of the cul-de-sac and onto Packers Falls. And it starts the whole length of my driveway and flows right down. I'm constantly trying to build my driveway up every year and, and stop this from being a constant problem, but.
This is the shared driveway or the driveway that's actually on your?
Shared.
Yeah, I'm not, right now, I'm not sharing it with anyone.
Right, it's his driveway.
I mean, it's a right-of-way that belongs to the management company in Portsmouth, but I, I have right-of-way on that right now. I'm the only house back there.
Oh, okay. Well, if they, if this were to go forward, they would have to have some sort of drainage plan that shows that they don't, at a minimum, don't increase off-site drainage any more than it already is. And if there was that situation, we'd try to look for a way, I think the board would try to look for a way for the developer to, to improve upon it if it could. I understand it's pretty wet out there with the wetlands, so I don't know if I can give you a definitive yes to that.
It's saturated.
Last house on the road that has a cellar, if that means anything. I have to have two sump pumps going every spring to.
Yeah, I mean, there's only.
My picnic tables from floating away, you know.
While we would encourage the developer to look at that, how much the, that can be improved, I couldn't tell you, but that would be one of the things we would encourage them to do.
Alright.
It's a legitimate concern.
Thank you.
Because the ground conditions out there are definitely saturated.
Ma'am, you had a comment?
I actually have a couple of comments.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is April Hopie and I live at 73 Packers Falls Road.
Could you just move the mic over so that we can hear you?
I live at 73 Packers Falls Road. I'm right in front of Aaron. Um, I'm concerned about this going through. One of the biggest reasons that I have, um, was also stated by Aaron, um, that the, there is an awful lot of water out there. Now, the history of that land, it was so wet that, um, it's been in Bruce and Aaron's family forever. And it was so wet that Bruce and Aaron's dad planted all those spruce trees to drink up the water. If trees are cut down, are we now looking at more of the property being wetlands? That's one thing I have to say. I'm not sure, I'd like to know when the most recent study of wetlands was, because I'm not sure that it's accurate. And if it was done, you know, in a.
2005. Hang on for a minute, ma'am.
According to the plan, um, there was a wetland study that was done in April 2005 and May 2005. Um, the wetlands were delineated by New Hampshire Soils Consultants and West Environmental. And there's a letter here from New Hampshire Soil.
Two, about two years ago.
Where did this come from? It was in the packet. Oh.
Part of the application.
I didn't get a copy of it.
Oh, the.
I didn't get a copy of it. So it's, it's been a couple of years.
So we do have a, we do have a report that we'd make available to if you'd like to look at that.
Okay.
Um, two years.
I also was, oh, I didn't bring my copy of the plan up here, but I was looking at it.
You can turn that board around if you'd like.
Well, I wrote the note on my.
Oh, sorry.
If I can find it. Okay, I don't know what I did with that. Um, I'd like to know what an open space means. I would, um, I would like to know if they are thinking of putting a single-family house or a multiple-family dwelling. Um, so I'd like to talk about the open space.
Can we, can we take those one at a time, ma'am?
Yep.
Um, within.
I may need to sit down.
Oh, we, we can move the chair over there.
Do you want to just run through the questions and then?
Okay, good, good. Give me the questions.
She needs to sit down.
Well, it's going to be a few minutes, so I'll do as best I can.
You want to bring your own, put your mic down?
Thank you. The other concern.
You want your brother to?
No, I'll be okay, Bruce, thanks. The other concern that I have, and I would be amiss because I belong to the National Wildlife Federation, the Sierra Club, the National Parks and Conservation Association, the Defenders of Wildlife, the Natu-, the Nature Conservancy, the Arbor Day Foundation, and the Zoological Society. So I would be amiss at not addressing the impact that developing that land will have on the habitats that we have for animals out there. People have been building, coming towards us, and what we've seen is an increase in the, in the animals coming out into our yards, which I don't mind, I love them. Um, I can tell you that I have personally seen, um, downy woodpeckers, billiated woodpeckers, hummingbirds, varieties of bats, some of which are endangered, hawks, possibly a red shoulder or a harrier, and I have taken pictures of many of these, and both of those are endangered. Wrens, sparrows, grosbeaks, Baltimore orioles, house finches, goldfinches, rusty blackbirds, which are also endangered, purple finches, which are our, is our state bird, but it is also endangered, robins, red-winged blackbirds, junkos, wild turkey, titmouse, cardinals, blue jays, grackles, mourning doves, brown creepers, cowbirds, crows, chickadees, deer, skunk, woodchucks, raccoons, newts, woolly bear caterpillars, monarch caterpillars, milkweed caterpillars, walking sticks, swamp milkweed leaf beetles, other beetles of various types, crickets, grasshoppers, katydids, praying mantises, bees of all types, wasps of all types, dragonflies, so many different varieties of dragonflies, spiders, many different varieties of spiders. I've used a lot of these pictures that I've taken of these animals to teach children where I worked. Link spider, the garden spider, the forest wolf spider, the black and yellow, argyopee, I don't, I don't, I think that's how you pronounce it. Red squirrels, gray squirrels, and chipmunks.
You forgot the bear.
And the bear. A black bear. But I, I said, this is what I've personally seen. I didn't personally see the black bear. So what I'm feeling is, number one, there's a lot more wetland out there than, than is being described.
Right.
Number two, it will have a severe impact on my, um, love for nature and my love for, um, seeing, I grew up in Boston. We saw pigeons, squirrels. When I first saw a frog, there were tree frogs, hundreds of tree frogs out there. There was one that used to live in my pool and they would call each other all night long. I never would have heard that when I grew up. I don't want to lose that. I don't want to lose the sounds out there. I don't want to lose these animals. It's a perfect place for habitat because it has your dead trees. A lot of animals like to build their homes in dead trees. It has live trees, it has pine trees, it has spruce trees, it has deciduous and coniferous trees. It, there's just so mu-, so much habitat out there. It would be really, really very hard for me to deal with, with getting rid of it and that I feel very strongly about that, so.
Okay. You had, I thank you very much for your comments. The last part, I think, is mostly comment. Uh, you had a question about open space subdivision. We have in our, our regulations, an open space subdivision for entities and actually, um, Mrs. Quox has a, as she mentioned before, had an application before, an approved application for an open sa-, space subdivision. It's a way of a developer developing property, um, coming forth with a unique, um, concept of developing property and in the development of that property, creating or maintaining a certain amount of open space. And there's, without going into it, there's a mathematical equation of, of develop, of how much development you can do versus how much, when, when you do that development, how much open space you have to allocate as part of that subdivision. And that open space is conserved in some fashion, either through a homeowners association and there's, there's several ways of doing it. So I think we've only had one that's been gone through and you were the initial one.
Yeah, we.
Um, in that particular instance, and Roseanne, you probably know the acreage better than I do, um, it was a 19 home lot, but.
Close to, close to 60 acres, 57, 58 acres.
Be conserved, um, in a, in a, concerning significant wetlands along Follet's Brook and open space. So the concept is, is, uh, to encourage development in a environmentally sound manner that creates open space while still allowing development to take place. It's the short answer to that. It's a, and it's a whole portion of our regulations that would have to go through. And part of that is, is when they do that, um, they have to do an environmental assessment of what's on the property, where are the sensitive areas, the wetlands, the whole gamut of, of issues and it's, it takes a while to get through those. And it's, but the intent is for, um, what I'll say, a major subdivision, something more than one home, which, what I think this is.
Right. So you think it's just one?
I, I, that, the other part of your question was, is it a single-family or multi-family? My understanding is, is it's, it's a single, Bill, do you understand?
I don't know the answer to it. I, I'd say.
It's a single-family. It's only.
We have to do the zoning.
The R1 district is zoned just for single-family.
Right next door to me, there's a dwelling that has many.
Well, it could very well be non-conforming or in existence.
But that would have to be defined. Obviously, we don't know, we don't know the specific answer to that. We think it is.
Okay, I'd like to just take a minute more. Okay, go ahead.
I just want to respond to one, I tend to agree with you about the wetlands, the extent of wetlands. And, uh, we have, um, wetlands overlay district in our zoning requirements and in area, in, in instances where there's a question on the wetlands boundary, um, there's a requirement that there be high-intensity soils mapped and done, which really establishes where those boundaries are and that's used for regulating, um, development in and around wetland areas. And the second point, I wanted to just sort of echo, um, what George was saying, that the intent of the open space development ordinance is to preserve those wildlife values that you're talking about. And I think we're, in looking at this plan, there's some skepticism as to whether or not what is being proposed really is, is consistent and would in fact protect those values.
And there is skepticism with me. Um, there was just one more thing that I would like to share with you, and this is quoting from chapter two, terrestrial resources of the. Master Plan in New Market. Two dash seven, wildlife. "New Market is home to a wide variety of terrestrial and marine wildlife species. Although not given much consideration in the past, preservation of these species and the various environments has become a concern, especially with rapidly increasing rates of development. These habitats can be the focus of recreational activities such as biking, hunting, fishing, hiking, boating, snowmobiling, camping, and bird watching. Preservation of these sensitive environmental areas is essential to the continued quality of life in the town." That is quoted out of the master plan in New Market. So that's...
I don't know if you missed the earlier discussion we had today, but that, we have, our first part of our discussion was on an open space plan and what has been done in the past and what we want to do in the future. So it's consistent.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more comment?
Sure.
You never know when somebody handicapped is coming to these meetings. The elevator door wasn't open.
It wasn't opening?
It was, no. The door to get to the elevator was locked. In the future, perhaps it could be opened.
Yes.
If I'd come with my scooter, I wouldn't have been able to get in.
Thank you for bringing that...
Thank you.
Any other, ma'am?
My name is Eva Zaschek Brown, and I'm Stanley Zaschek's sister. And I don't live in the town anymore, but I grew up here. And now his property has become my property. So we're one of the abutters for this. And I just felt, I just drove here two hours and fifteen minutes from my home in Massachusetts to make sure that at least I spoke my piece because we too are environmentalists, and I know Stan was. And his land back there is very wet. And that was my first concern, is that if they start to build on this property, that we would end up with some fill going in there. And if that happened, what would happen to my property now? Because it is so wet already. And the whole idea of open space, we live in a place in Massachusetts where the rules are very strict, and I live in the woods. And I couldn't imagine coming back to my own hometown and finding the places that I absolutely loved destroyed because of people who want to build. And so I'm coming to this meeting just because I want you to know what we feel as abutters, and that we are pretty much in, I guess, in agreement with what April said too, in terms of that being a very small lot. And I can see Stan's house. Now, when I go there, if there were a house right next door, I can't imagine where that water comes down from behind his house, and they try to put houses in there, that this is going to be even a great place for anyone to build. It's a comment I'm making, and I just want you to know that we made a big effort to be here because of that. And I didn't understand subdivision, and I'm glad that she asked that question, open space conservation subdivision. I wasn't sure what that meant either.
Again, it's good classification because my impression is that this is only one building. But if it's multiple buildings, you have a very good point. And even one building, we'd have to consider it, but...
I've seen it happen in so many places in Massachusetts, and I'm sure it's happening everywhere. And I do think this town has got some very special things about it. I loved it growing up, and I still love it. And I think that we deserve to keep that open space in there. If we're going to have the town that you, that makes it exciting for everybody to come to or want to come here because it has something specifically right about it. And I understand from what you're saying that that's the feeling of the planning board. But thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Any other comments in the public? Yes, sir. Then I'll take you next.
My name is Bruce Hopi. I'm on lot twenty-three. And everybody basically said everything that I, you know, all my thoughts. But there's one thing I want to emphasize was the amount of water that, in the springtime especially, this area in here becomes like a lake. And if this, if anything becomes a road or truckloads of gravel come in and trees are cut down, I'm worried about the water coming in over here. And just like Aaron, I got two sump pumps, and one of them doesn't handle the water that comes in in the spring. And I got a generator, and I'd lose the furnace and everything if the water level went up any higher. And last year was exceptionally bad year, but every, so many years, you can see like huge gallons of water right in here, you know, maybe a foot deep. So my main concern is water.
Actually, a corner of our property is moss and thorns. That tells you how wet it is.
April just about said everything, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, you got a comment?
My name's Dave Brown. I'm Eva Brown's husband. And I wanted to reiterate that that area back there has some natural beauty to it that I'd hate to see lost. See, the town is already investing to try to have an open space back there for future generations to enjoy. And to start developing chunks of it now, I mean, I am concerned about the drainage, but I'm more concerned about the loss of the habitat and loss of some of the species that April's been able to describe that she's been able to enjoy. Will our kids be able to enjoy that same natural beauty that's there? And I'd just like to, I think you can look at an area and say, well, this is wetlands. This isn't, but has anyone really looked to see, well, are there any blue-spotted salamanders back there? What types of endangered species are we potentially destroying habitat for?
Thank you, sir. Any... No, it's fine.
I'm Linda, seventy-five, Parkus Falls Room. What is not showing on this map is apparently years ago, back at the turn of the century, when their grandfather owned the property, there were culverts that are made. The ground is mounded out there so that when the water all comes down from the hill out here, it comes into Stan's backyard, which is a swamp because I've walked it before. And it just comes and it flows. One comes over here, cuts in back over by our garage, and the other comes right through, cuts along a right-of-way road that goes all the way out back where somebody has built a bridge so the water goes under the bridge, through Mike Honorfrat's property, behind Brooks's old property, and into what? Is that Brooke, Aaron? Anyway, it drains into the river. It's a very large, it's almost an aquifer, I guess you would say, of some sort. And way out back here, this one, this water here drains into the town's property and goes and also helps fill into what you were all talking about Follet's Brook earlier. So there is a lot of water drainage that, it's an incredible piece of land if you ever, for a small little chunk, as to how water flow out there really goes.
Okay.
And once it starts getting, where's it going?
It's a good point. Any other questions from the public? Any other comments from the public? Excuse me. If not, I'll close the public comment period. Any other comments, discussion? I think you've heard that the environmental impacts and the water drainage would be a significant concern.
Absolutely. I thank you and applaud you for making a long, long drive. It's sad sometimes when you come forward at a design review, and sometimes the room's empty. And then you come back a month later and submit a full-bone plan, and everybody shows up. So it's all good input. I've taken fairly detailed notes. I did note, Diane, that you felt that the wetland delineation is inaccurate.
It may not be adequate enough.
It may not be adequate enough. I mean, there's been quite a bit of testimony here this evening about the extent of wetlands.
I think they said it was done per core jurisdictional method though, right?
But our regulations pertain to poorly drained and very poorly drained soils.
Yeah, and I'm not a wetland, I mean...
Neither am I. I'd have to have Mark and Jamie Long come and speak to that.
I know we do it against the core delineation method, but if hydro soils, I thought that took into account, but you're right. Could you open it up? Oh, you want to hear? Oh, sorry. We were saying that we, the discussion was, there was a delineation, a wetland delineation done in April of two thousand five, it appears. The question was, is that on the book that Diane wrote, the town plan that has brought up, is that sufficient enough to really define poorly drained soils, which is what our regulation, our town regulations call for? So we would need to verify that it was a, unless there's been development out there, but it was a valid wetland delineation, then it exists already. If not, they'll have to go out and do some more work to fine-tune the boundary of the wetland.
As your report states, that it was done, meaning the criteria of poorly drained soils is defined by, really long, an acronym, meaning High Intensity Soils Map of New Hampshire.
Yeah.
So, but I hear what you're saying.
It's two years, I mean, again, we...
It's also two years old.
It's two years old, but unless development is...
It says, it says that they, it will have to be determined when the High Intensity Soil Survey is completed, which is the delineation of poorly drained and very poorly drained, which is what our local setback requirements pertain to. In the very last paragraph. So he's acknowledging that the methodology he used is not the same as what we use in our local requirements, which requires High Intensity Soil Survey mapping. That's all.
That'll teach me to think I know about wetlands.
And I'm not a certified wetland scientist, so...
I work with them. They'd be ashamed of me at this point. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I just, it would be helpful if, this is a site map, I understand that, it would be helpful if, as one of the comments from the public showed where the, where the water was flowing. They mentioned water flowing to Follet's Brook. It would be helpful...
If we had a bigger map.
We had a bigger, and showed where this water was flowing, where it was draining, and the importance of that, rather than just this small site map with no idea of what's beyond the boundaries of it.
It's even hard to read the contour lines because you don't know what heights they represent.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a design review.
That's why you...
Better ask a surveyor about that. I don't know. Good point.
Very good points that have been raised, I think.
And maybe delineate those existing culverts that are there already?
If they can be found.
They're not culverts. They were, they're holes that they had dug through the ground to keep the water running from...
So, not easily.
You're not saying culvert, you're saying drainage ditches.
Sounds like tile.
No, there's no tile. It's nothing. It's the old-fashioned nineteen-ten, you know, they took and they mounded their dirt and made little gullies so the water was forced to go.
Like a ditch?
Swales?
Swales.
Swales, yeah.
You know, and there's two of them that go across our property, come into my property, come into one. I have like a little mini pond out there that goes under a bridge and in through Mike Honorfrat's property.
It's more defined than Honorfrat's field.
You can really see it well there.
You can see it. Might even show up on an aerial.
And the pond behind Honorfrat's house is there because Bruce was going to put a house out there, and they had a spring, and it filled in so fast that they had to pull the house out.
Yeah.
Town's got to town well.
High school site.
Another location.
I don't know, but town is still aware of this. Pippa might be the only one that remembers this, but since the water table is so high in there, freezes, the frost freezes down deep very quickly. And my water pipe freezes every year. And the deal I had, that goes all the way back to Richmond Walker, when he was the agent that put the pipe in, is I disconnect my water meter and I keep the water running. So I don't end up not having to run five garden hoses to his house and running the water backwards into my system.
So long freeze.
Right.
We actually had to move our driveway entrance over to the other side of our property because of this place, so that the snow would at least insulate us somewhat.
And I just recently did that, and I did have to get a driveway permit.
That's what Rick told me.
But that's how high the water table is out there. Our pipes are a good five and a half feet in the ground and will freeze in that water.
Pippa, you got to hang there?
Well, the problem is with that whole area is down by the river at the end of Lafayette Street. It's solid clay, and it forms a dam right down there. As you go back towards their property and up towards that hill, there's about five or six feet of sand before you get to the clay. So consequently, the water stays in there at all times. And when the frost gets in there, goes right down, especially if you have a driveway there, and you keep plowing it off, the frost goes all the way down to the pipe and freezes it. And there was a drainage system that was put in there when Lafayette Street was built. And for some reason, the town, there was a manhole down in front of my brother's house. The town took it out and put a pipe in through there versus the catch basin. And they didn't resolve the problem because it'll never be resolved because the water can't get out of that area of the ground. And it was all, it will always happen every year.
Any other comment? You have anything for us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. I appreciate them.
No, just a, it's a non-binding discussion.
All of those houses up there, you dug out the foundation, it was all sand, and you got down to the clay. Now, every time the water comes in there every year, it fills that whole area where all the houses are. That's why they need two sump pumps in there, not a company. And the water goes down to that clay, and it stays in, it fills right up to the top.
Back, back, back to order here. You need the elevator to get out, ma'am?
Yeah, well, no, you can, you can open the door from the inside out. It's just, yeah. But you can't open the door from the parking lot coming in, but it's always open when you leave the elevator. You can always open that door.
We'll let you out, but we won't let you in.
Well, I'd like to see that chain.
No, I'm only kidding, ma'am.
I know. But I still would like to see a chain.
No, you're right.
I know most of the meetings that I've been to, it's, it's always been a concerted effort, always for conservation and other groups, so.
Diane?
It's just open.
Oh, no.
Okay. I didn't know if you had a key.
No, there wouldn't be any key.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't have a trustworthy face.
I guess you are.
Mike does, though.
He does.
Mike has, Mike has the keys to the kingdom. You have a trustworthy face. Okay, we're on to other business, which I don't think there's much. But first thing is a reminder that next, I believe the twenty-first is Wednesday, is correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
We have a joint meeting with the town council. It's, we're supposed to do that annually. We didn't do it last year, so this will be the second time that I'll have sat in on one of those. One of the, just to, I think one of the agenda items that night, I don't think I know, I believe is the urban service boundary. So if everybody could sort of dust that off and look at it again, hopefully we'll answer whatever the town council's questions are, and we can move that forward to having the town council adopt it. I think the, another item, maybe I shouldn't say this. Do you have an agenda? I think it's historic district.
Right.
That'll be one. And I don't know if the Quax property is...
The Quax property is going to be coming up for discussion, so...
Those three items that we had talked about at our last meeting that we would be...
Those, those three items that we had talked about at our last meeting that we would be discussing with you people.
Okay, so those are three, and maybe the, whatever comes up in between.
It's February twenty first, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Week from tomorrow.
Week from tomorrow.
We'll find out which side you're really on.
Nice guy.
Depending on where you sit, we know where you're at.
But I'm not sure if we'll meet up here or if we'll meet downstairs.
Uh, last time we met here.
We had an extra table and chairs.
We squeeze people in. But we could do it, and I think we, we meet downstairs when the public, we think there's going to be a number of people in the public.
Is conservation coming as well? It's usually, no, it's usually planning, um, council and conservation.
Okay, now, there was something else.
I don't know. Uh, Brad had a, um, sample resolution he wanted to talk to everyone about.
That's what I saw, the packet up here.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is, uh, I talked about it really quickly at the last meeting. Uh, it's a resolution that quite a few, I believe a hundred and seventy-six towns in the state are now put on their, their, uh, their warrants to vote on this year. And in essence, it's saying that they would like to see the state and Congress and the president address climate change. And in the past, this has been a semi-effective tool to get things to happen. So, uh, right now, it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't have any real upfront costs, so to speak, so it's, a lot of towns are looking at curbing emissions within the town by changing, uh, light bulbs, uh, street lights, stuff like that. So, small actions that'll make collectively a big impact. And the packet that you got actually addresses a lot of questions that people have had about this. But it's, it's a rather worthwhile resolution in my mind, and I believe Diane had said that it will be on our town warrant.
Yeah, and I did speak with, I think it was Alan Schneider had mentioned that there was a, a petition that was circulating and that they were trying to get something on the ballot. I also talked with Al Dixon, and he said that, you know, if it came as an official recommendation or endorsement by Conservation Commission of the Planning Board, then it could be forwarded to the town council and they could put it on the warrant. And I believe the deadline for that is March sixth, then for a petitioned, um, warrant article would be March sixth. So, we still have some time.
Could, could we adopt a resolution tonight to have this?
Certainly.
Boarded into the council?
Up to the planning board whether they would like to do that.
It's, it's this resolution, we would send it to the council for them to put onto the May warrant.
Bob, there's nothing binding here on this stuff, is there?
There, yeah, I mean.
Does this feel good, or what?
It's feel good, but there can be bite to it. So, the idea is, you know, get a little bit and see what you can get, you know? But, uh, there's no actual requirement for us right now, so it's, we're not going to adopt it and end up regretting it, but we'll make what, make of it what we can. So, you know, depends on the town's ambition, so.
There's one thing that I noticed in here, and I read through it quickly before, is furnace cleaning. Individual furnace home cleaning.
Right.
There are homes that people don't clean their furnaces for four, five years, they're waxed.
Well, and that's the idea of it, I mean.
This, this should be in here.
And, and, I mean, this isn't saying this is what you have to do. I mean, but that's something that our town can look at and, and suggest, or maybe it can be a, an informational packet or webpage that goes up on our town's webpage saying, here's some suggestions on how to, how to reduce climate change. And here's some things you can do, you know? If everyone looks and changes a couple of compact fluorescents in the United States, it has a huge implication. And, and this is sort of saying that we would like to look at this, and, and as a town, we would like to look at what we can do to, to curb climate change. Some towns have been very proactive already, some towns are looking to adopt it but really have no plans whatsoever. I mean, you can start looking at small things like streetlights and, or some town halls amazingly don't have, you know, low energy fluorescents, and, and that makes a huge difference.
Some of the bigger businesses like Home Depot have specials for you.
Absolutely. And, and, uh, New Hampshire, uh.
PSNH.
PSNH does a lot of things about energy efficiency, so. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I would think they, and I, you know, I have to admit, I haven't followed it, but if it's moving forward with our issues with the microturbine, if they, if that proves beneficial, would count for this.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, one more thing.
I know, I read in Exeter Newsletter today that Epping's considering an ordinance to, for green homes. So, there's a letter to the editor and from the planning members in the Exeter Newsletter today.
Yeah.
Did you ever mention the suggestion at all in that the RFP that they?
I did, I sent him a copy of the minutes. I think it was too late to incorporate in the RFP, but I did send him a copy.
And even with the new school coming in, I mean, it'd be something to require them to use the, the items to, to help lower the cost. You know, you save money and save the environment at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, by pushing forward this, we're not actually setting any requirements at this time, but it would be something to look into. Or maybe even form a, a committee within town, a volunteer committee.
Awareness of plantists.
To look at this, or, or even have the CC look at it, obviously. I mean, I think it's relatively, I mean, it, it's very worthwhile in that we have no real obligation, but we can do what we can with it. And sometimes just the force of having a handful of people step forward and say, this is what we'd like to see, sometimes that gets some action.
One problem I have is, again, maybe it's just my, my personal viewpoint, but it talks about climate, the title is climate change.
Right.
Which implies global warming, and we all know that's a big, a big issue right now. And from my position, that's not settled science, there's not a consensus among scientists about global warming and climate change that induced by mankind and so on. So, I guess I, things I read through this, and it, and it, these are smart things to do, there are logical things to do, going to a fluorescent light bulb and so on. I have a problem with the title of it being climate change when it's not settled science, there's not a consensus among scientists, regardless of what you're reading, what Al Gore says, so.
I mean, I'm not going to argue with you on that. I, I think that it's, no matter what you call it, it's, it's actions that make sense for people and humanity, so.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
Let's do what we can to, to reduce energy consumption.
I don't like it to be under the umbrella of climate change when that's, that's very politically.
If you read George Will's in the Manche Union, he writes quite an article all the time. He's on with, uh, George Stephanopoulos, George Will. He's a writer from our, and he had a big article on climate change in the Manche Union this past week, and it was interesting to read.
Does he agree with it or disagree?
Oh, he disagrees with the concept. I mean, he says, yeah, we have a, kind of global warming somewhat, but the cost of implementing this and it's going to be devastating to the whole world, not just the country that tries to get it done. And he says, how are you going to start making China close up all their great big furnaces and burn this coal? All the, they're not going to do it, and he says, and you can't, everybody's got to do it. So, it was quite an article, but evidently, we didn't see it, but it, it was interesting, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think with any argument that anyone is going to have, there's obviously two sides, and, and I think sometimes there's a lot of value just in, in having buy-in by groups. I mean, we don't see a whole lot of slavery happening nowadays, that was very prevalent once upon a time, and as people slowly said, were against it, whether they believed that or not, it, it made changes, so. Regardless of what your, your purpose is in, in, you know, changing, if it's just to save seven dollars on your electric bill every month, I think whatever steps you take are worthwhile, so regardless of your motives.
Rob, would it take any impact away to, to change it to a, an energy efficiency type of?
I don't see a problem with that. I mean, climate changes, I think climate change is a long, the very long out pitcher, but yeah, absolutely, I mean.
Millions of years.
You know, whatever we want to call it is, is fine. I mean, I don't think that climate change necessarily is the, the best reflection of, of what this is about. It's about, I think it's about doing smarter things and conserving what we have now while we can.
You've got our attention.
Hey, you know, sometimes that's all you need.
Says a million years ago, we had a hundred feet of ice in Chicago. We don't have it today, is that, and the Vikings were farming out in Greenland.
Well, at one point, this was the, the beachfront property, so, you know, what could we do? Things change, but, you know.
It has, I've read some articles on that, and where, they had like, with two, two thousand five hundred scientists who studied this and gave reports. And the thing that came out was volcanic eruptions would overpower what we could do. Our pollution would be one tenth of what a volcanic eruption would be like. So, I, I don't know, I'm not going to go up there and measure that stuff myself, but it was interesting to hear them talk that way.
Yeah, well, I mean, you could still look at it like, you know, say a volcanic eruption is a ten, and what we're doing is one. I would rather have ten than eleven. So.
I agree, yeah.
You know, it's, it's what you make of it, and, and regardless of, of where anyone falls, I think that it still has a lot of validity.
You, you got something, because, you know, in terms of pollution, like in my, in our younger days and his also, where people would change oil in their cars, and they dumping aside the road, dumping aside their lawn. No big deal, you know? But it was a big deal, and it's hurting us today.
It definitely is climate change, but it, it happens over such a long period of time that pretty hard to measure it.
Yeah, and who can measure it?
What's it last so many hundred years, the temperature's got up one degree or something? So, it, it happens over a terrible long period of time.
But if you start looking at, at populations like fisheries, one degree is a very significant thing.
And also bringing up sea levels.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, and I'm not trying to.
The ocean coming up too, they say the ocean's filling up with this, all this ice, it's melting on the ice caps and everything, it is.
It is.
But an inch in five, six thousand years or something, I mean, who the hell's going to worry about that? Jesus, hell, we ain't, uh, whomever.
I, I plan on being alive in six thousand years, all right?
You worry about that?
That's my effort.
We never saw possums around here, now you see possums around here. So, that touches something, it is getting warmer. Never, never saw possum.
You never had robins year round either, like you do now, because the, your feed.
I like what you, I understand what you're saying, and, and I think it's important, you know, a couple of things that you got to realize is if you take a look at the history of Newmarket, I mean, with the urban service boundary, how long it's taken to move that along? Something like this, realistically, I mean, I've heard, you know, the, the May warrants this being a possible, you know, I, quite honestly, I don't see that being an option. But if it's something that you, that you feel strongly about and get the ball rolling, it's something that you can definitely get the council, you know, get, get the planning board behind, possibly get the council behind, so that a year from this May, this is something that is doable.
Well, that's fine, I mean, if it.
You know, but to just, I mean, you know, I don't want to give up on it, I, I think what, what you're saying is, is politically correct, if nothing else.
You really think that if we voted on this tonight, that it couldn't get, I thought you said by May set, March sixth?
March sixth. Well, they, if you get twenty-five voters, if you get twenty-five voters to sign a petition, then it has to go on the warrant. I mean, that's one option.
No, the town council has to consider it, I think it's four hundred voters to get it on a warrant, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
I, I honestly think, as, as John pointed out with, with the catchphrase in the title, right now, to get something like this to pass on, on a ballot, it wouldn't be very hard. So, and to get four hundred signatures, I don't see that being very hard.
By trying, you could try.
I guess I missed something. If we pass, if we send something tonight, and the next, the next town council's when?
Next, next Wednesday. I mean, you could make that point number four if you wanted to, but.
If the town council can put something on the warrant as late as March twentieth. If it comes in as a petition with whatever number of voters asking for it, then the deadline is March sixth.
Typically, you need to verify the registered voters.
So, and the town, all the town council would have to be doing is.
Saying yes.
Saying yes, let's put it on the warrant.
The, the only acknowledgement is it's worthy to put on a warrant article. And then the town.
Would make the decision.
Would make a vote.
That's my thought.
And you think that would?
I don't think that would happen. I'm, I'm just being honest with you, I, I just, I, you know, the discussion that we've had here, you know, having the packets to look at prior to the meeting, the discussion that's going around and, and the different points of views on it, I can just see, see the council, I, I speak, I guess I'm speaking for myself. As an observer of the council, I can't see them reacting to this in two meetings. Actually, one meeting, because the second meeting would be the seventh.
I'll give you that.
So, it'd have, so it'd have to be one, so I'm, you know, I'm just being upfront with you. I think it's a great idea, and, and it's got warrant to go on as a warrant article, but, you know, it's something that I think realistically, you've got to look at the next time around. And then everybody's educated on it too, as opposed to putting it out there and some of the people not really being educated on it.
That's right.
Somebody else think?
Is there any way, you know how the council had those resolutions regarding, um, tax breaks or incentives, tax incentives? If you had a, a new type of heating, like a, if you heated your entire house with a wood burning stove, a furnace, a wood burning, uh, solar panels, they had a resolution they passed sometime last year, the tax incentives for a few types of things like that.
See, I have no idea how long to even discuss something like that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we could tie this into it on an educational way. Do you remember that, Diane?
No.
No?
Sorry.
I mean, I don't know if we could tie in, add in with that or not. Or just use it as an educational tool to get the information out and then try to put it in the warrant article for next year. Like we did with the, like the conservation did with the mosquito control. Uh, what you could do for the mosquitoes regarding the triple E and all that, and we've got that up on the website, sir, precautions to take, things to do and not to do. And we can utilize this in the same way and utilize the website to get the word out.
When is getting our packet, because I don't.
It was here tonight.
Oh, okay, I thought, I, I wasn't, I've sort of been reading a lot of different things, I was wondering if I missed it along the way.
No, no.
So, maybe what we'll do, people want to, since it only got here tonight, won't we put this on other business next time around, won't we read it, continue the discussion? I would say, beyond next meeting, we should decide if we'd like to move this forward, make them necessary, well, no, I shouldn't say necessary, recommend, whatever we decide to make changes to this, the title or whatever, and then pass it on to the pla, uh, the town council, not, not.
They're not going to be able to make the deadline.
Yeah, but that wouldn't make the deadline for this year.
For future years.
Well, few, not future years.
Future year.
Yeah.
The next year, hopefully.
I could bring it up though, at, at next meeting.
We're all going to be at.
We can bring it up at the.
We're all going to be at the next meeting.
We can bring it up on Wednesday.
Bring it up on Wednesday.
Yeah, I mean.
Can we put this in a packet for Wednesday and make that point of discussion for Wednesday?
Actually, I have a lot more information about it.
What, if you get it in advance, then.
What I would recommend, if you can, get it to Kathy as quick as possible. I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm all in favor, but I just don't want you to get your hopes up that, you know, this is something that can, can fly in a couple of weeks.
I understand that.
There's, there's a lot going on.
I mean, I don't view this as a sig, oh shit, don't take this the wrong way. This is not a significant issue.
Well, I mean, it is a significant issue, but I don't see this as mind boggling as the, as.
In terms of legalities.
Where'd you get that?
Urban service boundary.
Put it up the way.
I mean, it's not.
Put it up the way?
It's just a.
It's a non-binding.
Non-binding.
Like a non-doing rule.
All we're seeking is to get it on a warrant article.
You'd also like to have the people educated enough so that they're going to vote to pass it, not just say, what is this? You know, I mean, no.
But there'll be a deliberative session.
It, it might be embarrassing to be the one town in the state of New Hampshire who, who votes no on it, one hundred and seventy-five vote yes.
Yeah, no.
So, you know, it's.
Well, I mean, you have a deliberative session, and that's, that's where most people get their information.
I have, it says that the record of this vote shall be transmitted to so-and-so and the president and so on. Who's going to transmit that? Is it one of the, uh, grassroots fund dot org, one of these folks back here?
I will gladly bring this to Senator Greg's office. I, I mean, these aren't big issues, I mean, that's, that's a small issue. Who's going to give it to our Congress congressional vote?
To me, it's not a small issue, because who communicates that to Congress and Washington and so on? and so on? Maybe a, a environmental left-wing, whatever you want to call it, environmental group that maybe the citizens of Newmarket don't think represent that.
Well, I think that it would be passed on to our congressional delegation by the time.
Yep. If that's the case, then that's fine.
And I mean, I don't see anything in here saying that it's going to be whatever group it is that you might want to name passing it on, so I wouldn't assume.
See, well, that's not clarified.
I think you're advocating it, some of the groups don't want it, I don't say that.
You know.
I mean, not that I'm opposed.
Advocating groups to advocate things, I mean, there's not much more I can say.
Well, in John's point, it's saying, you put it on a warrant and it gets passed. How does, I would, I would assume it was just, but we should figure that out, it's a letter from the town manager or the town council that says here we...
As opposed to one of these groups.
No, listen, I think that's also...
We should figure out that...
The CBA decided.
Is it also...
Order, let's listen here.
I, I would also be willing to redraft this in a way encompassing all these concerns.
That would be helpful.
And maybe that's what we would like to see for the council meeting.
I mean, is this something that can be just adopted by the town as a resolution, as opposed to adopting and sending off to so-and-so? I mean, you know, that's something that you could do in, in a very short period.
The purpose, the purpose is more or less saying that our town believes this, you're our representation in, in, you know, the most powerful part of our country, Congress, could you please act on, on behalf of our town or this majority of towns in the country? I mean, that's how government is supposed to work, so, you know? Whether we see it, you know, it's, it's another story.
Is this, do we know that this wording is what's been approved by the other 175 towns or whatever?
I honestly can't tell you. As you probably know, I work at the Rockingham Planning Commission. We're having, my commission is having a discussion of this next week and this was taken from that. So I don't know that it's necessarily the, I don't know that there's an approved wording, to be honest, but it's the idea that a handful of towns are getting together on the same thing, so.
What was this, what was the source of this wording?
It was from an informational package from my planning commission.
Isn't it being put forth by the carbon coalition, which is a group of environmental groups in New Hampshire, isn't that correct?
Yep, yep. I'm trying to think, I had a couple of people tell me that they were members of the carbon coalition, I'm trying to think of who they were, but I don't...
I know a couple of people, if you need some contact.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Any other discussion on this point? Diane just handed out, I think, a draft of zoning ordinance change for accessory sheds.
Yep. If you recall, at our December meeting, our chairman of our zoning board of adjustment came in and talked with the planning board about their interest in having some changes made to liberalize the requirements for accessory sheds. And based on the feedback that I heard from the board at that meeting and also from the zoning board, I've drafted something. And this is just in draft form at this point and we don't, we haven't noticed this on the agenda, but I did want to pass it out and suggest that between now and maybe the next meeting, we could take a look at it and maybe we could set up a work session at the next meeting so we can take it up and discuss it further detail.
I wouldn't, yeah, suggesting a separate work meeting.
Well, just, I'll put it on the agenda for a work, for a discussion.
For, yeah, other business.
Right.
Would we be trying to put this on, would, this wouldn't require a warrant?
No, no.
This would be an adoption by us.
Well, it would be recommended to the town council and they would adopt it, would go through the zoning change requirements.
Right.
So the next meeting would be discussion.
Yep.
After that, you'd make any changes, you could take, then the following meeting, we probably could do...
Present it to the council.
Well, present it to the public first, right?
Public, well, the public hearing through the council.
We'd have the, yeah, the council has the public hearings, although we could have our own public hearings if we wanted to get some feedback from the public as well.
I thought, I thought we did for the urban service boundary. I thought that was the, the...
Well, we have to notice it when we discuss it, so that in part is a public hearing, but then I think at the council level, they have to read it and then they have to, the next month they, meeting, they have to have a public hearing.
So if we put this on the agenda for our next meeting, that'll consider, that'd be count for our public portion of it. Even though it's only, it's a work, it's to, to talk about it and fine, and fine-tune it.
There has, there has to be a formal public hearing and it's my understanding that the town council conducts that public hearing.
Yeah.
Diane, why 120 square feet?
It's way too small.
Is that, is that the one debate?
That's just a, a number. The Durham example was 10 by 10.
That's 12, that's a decent size, sure.
You put your sit-down mower in there and it's, it's filled. It's too small.
I think the town of Trafford was 50 square feet.
50?
50? I think you put two barrels in there.
I don't know, it must be rubbish.
Rubbish shit.
Well, we can talk about it next time.
Let's talk about it and if you feel that it's too small, then we can look at some larger sizes.
Why don't you just bring it up, so you think about it?
You know, I'm, I question who would have a sit-down mower on these M2 or 3 or 4 zones, because they're mostly pretty dense zones.
3, what's the, R3 is an acre.
I don't know, I have to look. My impression was that this is a problem.
Also, that would be just for these areas.
That's what the, that's what was suggested by the zoning board, that it just be included in, you know, sort of the inner core area of the town. With the understanding that, you know, in the rural...
Small lots and that was the rationale.
Right, in the, in the more rural sections with large lots, you know, it's not a problem that they need the setback requirements.
I have to, okay. I see what we know.
Yeah, 10, 10 by 12, I think that's a decent size, in my mind. I even question the 12 feet.
Durham said 10 by 10.
10 by 12, it says 120.
Yeah, well, that's the standard size they come in basically, it's 10 by 12.
Yeah, I mean, but, I mean, to visualize it.
I got one, 48 square feet, so I didn't have to get, you got to get a building permit over 50 square feet up there, so you get it smaller.